Oh, but my computer's telling me it's 6:31. So why don't we call the meeting to order? Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Okay. If there is no discussion, let's move to a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve Ladue Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Lucas Jones.
I challenge to remember the alphabet at the beginning of these meetings.
Well, as people come in, I put them in alphabetical order on my screens.
As long as Steve is there, I'm happy.
And Dave will not.
Dave is not, so that's screwing me up.
Right, right.
And I count on Ford, so Ford, you have to be here.
That's how we all rely on each other in so many ways, big and small. Under the Chair's report, I have a couple of things. So first of all, it seems like a long time since we met. But, you know, I guess it is only it's that it's been a very eventful time. And I want to take a minute to acknowledge the attack on the Capitol last week. You know, none of us live, work, go to school in isolation. And things that happen in our communities and our country affect all of us. And I know from my own experience in talking to the people I work with and the students that they work with, that, you know, that there has been a really high level of anxiety, you know, higher than usual over, over the past week that everyone's been acknowledging. And I thought everyone's been experiencing. And I did want to take a moment right now to really acknowledge the, you know, Minuteman administration faculty for the really high level of social emotional support that you offer in the school. You know, it's important all the time, but it's especially important right now. So it is much appreciated. A couple of other announcements are on January 6 will be our budget hearing and school committee meeting. So, you know, make sure that you have, that's two weeks from today. So make sure you have marked your calendar. I also want to just call attention to the school committee meeting norms that are in your packet. These were adopted about 10 years ago by the school committee. They're in the packet for review and we will be referring to them and having a discussion about them at our next meeting. But, you know, I did want to just call your attention to that. Okay, anything else for the good of the organization? Okay, let's move to superintendent's report.
School building committee report, Ford?
I'll give the building committee report and then I can turn it over to Ed to just give an update. Well, I can give an update on the contract also. In terms of the school building progress, we actually have 11 items that need to be completed. And when they are completed, we should be able to get our certificate of occupancy for the theater. We have the certificate of occupancy for the building, but it's the certificate of occupancy for the theater that's being held up. And the 11 items, don't ask questions, but the 11 items all have to do with outdoor work that needs to be done by Dow that Gilbane is working on. And Lincoln is holding it up until those are satisfied. And that's where we are as of this moment. We are trying to see if we can move it forward, but the 11 items may not be done until next April because we have frozen ground out there and they all are involved in moving some earth around and planting grass. And the last we knew is the grass had to be grown before this could happen. So that's my update. And we are just as happy as could be as we move along. In terms of the athletic fields, the our construction manager has done all the demo work that was still resided on the, on the place, which is just removing some things. And they're stripping loam right now. They're nearing the end of that and they're stockpiling it. The other issue that we're dealing with, which we will resolve is, is the Cambridge Water Association, whatever commission, along with Lincoln, wants us to remark the borderline for the town. So we do not take down any trees that we should not take down. And that is about to be done. So we're moving along. We're on budget, we're on time, and that's good. We did have a meeting today to look at the PV contract. We have it. There are a few items there that need to be taken care of. And we would hope that the next two, at the next meeting in two weeks, on January 26, we will get it out ahead of time and we can vote to approve it. I don't know if Ed, if you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, in your packet, you had a presentation on the PV project update. It's boiling down to a couple of very, you know, unlikely events. But in the event that we don't pay the bill or something. And then the other issue that was really, needs a little bit more work and we needed to refine it today, was snow removal, especially in a, in a, you know, a snowmageddon kind of situation. How that would happen, who would do it? Because they own the asset, but we would be working with them to remove snow from around the installation. And we came to a reasonable conclusion today, but it wasn't codified in the contract. And I didn't want to send you a contract. They apologize for being late with it. It'll probably be done by the end of the week. And then we'll send it out so you have a chance to read. It's typical contract language, but but in regards to the project itself, if any members had any questions about the project. If you recall, the real value in this project is our getting lead certification, which qualifies us for reimbursement points that we've always counted on since the beginning. But those reimbursement points are about $2 million. The annual savings from the project are estimated to be fairly minor, I think. $24,000 to $38,000. And there, you know, there's a new climate bill in the state that the governor has yet to sign. But once that is signed, it's to our benefit in this contract. And so I think there was some discussion amongst the lawyers and the contractor around that to be clear, be clear about the, the value to the district once the climate bill is signed. So it makes sense to just wait a couple of weeks and put our stamp on it. Jennifer?
Actually, I have a question about the occupancy of the theater, back to Ford's report. Does that prevent us from, I mean, I know kids are in for shop. Does that prevent them from getting into the theater altogether?
It has not so far. I did express my concern at the construction meeting today about liability. And I sent, I sent our attorney and our insurance person a question. You know, what, what's the status of a temporary CO versus a CO versus a temporary C, certificate of occupancy that has expired? So I'm, I'm working with the attorney and the insurance folks around that. It has not impacted the program at all. But we're certainly not using the, the, today, for instance, our final AV package came in, which was our, the new cameras and all that stuff. So we haven't utilized the theater fully. I mean, if we were in a non-COVID environment, I think this would be a pretty serious issue. But it's Lincoln's. Yeah, I'll just stop there.
I just, I wanted to make sure it wasn't impacting the, the kids in their, I mean, I, we're in a COVID situation. So I guess if you're going to have this, it's the best possible scenario because what's your option, right?
That's the positive way to look.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the, the kids weren't being, you know, prevented.
It's not impacting kids at all right now.
It's only impacting a few people at this meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, shall we move on to enrollment?
Yeah, Jeff, I think Jeff needs to share his screen too.
I do briefly. So I'm going to do that if I can. Let's see if I can find the right one. Here we go. So can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so as we mentioned at our last meeting, we believe that it is appropriate, based on the type of work that we are doing, to more formalize the operations of the enrollment task force into a full school committee. And I have for your delight, a motion here that I am presenting and I'll read it. I move that the enrollment task force shall be dissolved. A new subcommittee, the Communication Access and Admissions Subcommittee, CAA, shall be formed. The CAA will adopt the goals of the enrollment task force. And I would like somebody to move that so we can put it on the
Oh, moved.
discussion. Okay, so we explained this last time. I should mention that at our last meeting, which was just last night, there were two items that we spent considerable time on. One was the idea of how we could allow enrollment of up to 800 students, which is something we've discussed before. And how can we best communicate with our towns so that all towns are taking appropriate advantage of the Minuteman option, which they don't, don't do? So we continue to work on those items. And by changing this from a task force to a subcommittee, then I think we will have more credibility moving forward. And eventually, there should be a formal presentation probably by the administration on ideas of how to meet an 800-member school. And I got to suggest that Ted in the near future. In the meantime, any discussion or comments on this motion that we've put on the table? Can't see everybody like this.
I can see everyone, Jeff.
Okay, good.
Let's see, any, any questions, comments? It does not seem like we do, so let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Steve Ladue Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Lucas Jones.
And I would, so the motion carries unanimously. And I would like to say that Jeff has agreed to be the chair of the new CAA Subcommittee.
So I think that we're going to have some very interesting stuff for you. Things that come from the membership and also Ed Boquillen's leadership is going to be directly responsible for some of the interesting things we're going to be talking about. I'm very, very happy where we're going right now. I think you will be too. Thank you. That's the end of the enrollment report.
Any questions on the enrollment report overall? Okay, let's move on to principals' report.
You missed the communications update.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss the communications update.
Well, also, if I may, Madam Chair, I said, in the packet, you received the preliminary slot allocation formula. And I just wanted to give you an overview of that. Beginning last year, under the new admissions policy, there's an admissions committee that every year submits to the school committee a slot allocation formula. Last year, we did it in March. This year, I wanted to kind of get, get discussing it a little bit earlier. And last night at the enrollment subcommittee, we spent some time looking at it. And I looked at it some more this morning. And let me back up again. In the admissions policy, there's no prescribed methodology for doing it. But one of the things that came out, and if you looked at the, that, that chart, it's, it's, some parts of it didn't make sense, I guess is the best way to say it. Let me just see here. Oh, am I sharing something? Stop, stop that. Sorry about that. Right here. Anyway, the, the last year, we used this methodology, which was a four-year rolling average, which aligns with how we, how we allocate the capital assessment to our member towns. And in that formula, there is a minimum, a minimum contribution, if you will, or an equal contribution from each town. So last year, we tried to infuse that, that theology into the mix. But when you look at it this year, it really didn't make sense. And so we looked at a couple of other methodologies. And one I sent to the enrollment subcommittee this afternoon was just looking at the last two years of enrollment versus the last four years. Because year three and four, I think they're kind of skewing the, the process a little bit. So I'm going to send out another one and we'll look at that minimum slot allocation again. I think there's only one, you know, yeah, in this, Dover had four students here on October 1, 2003. And under the previous thing, they would get two slots. And maybe that's not enough. We wouldn't want Dover to get shortchanged if they had five kids. So maybe we'll come up with a five minimum or something like that. I, I hope I'm confusing you enough because, but, but the idea is that we want to look at what would the slot allocation formula be with, for 200 freshmen? And so we're going to work that a little bit more so that it's a, an equal thing. And we actually have more applications from our member towns than we do slots right now. So Jennifer?
So, yeah, I just, I know this has been, I think I've said it a number of times. Lancaster is sending disproportionately massive numbers of their eighth grade students. I mean, it's, it's 20%. At, I think in the, at least in the junior class, it was 20%. So for us, I mean, I, I want kids to be able to go. But the, what's happening to our budget because of the Minuteman part of it is I think it's currently, 5% of our budget is just Minuteman, which for 50 kids is a lot for us to swallow. I don't feel a lot of pushback from the town, but I think this is something that I would like to encourage the slot allocation to kind of try to encourage other towns to fill in some of those spots. I don't want to deny Lancaster kids, but I don't want Lancaster kids to fill in additional slots. I guess that's mine.
Well, Jeff can, can, you know, emphasize, we spent a lot of time talking about a few communities that are underperforming when it comes to the percentage of eighth graders applying and enrolling. And we are, you know, the way to solve that, I think, is to get everyone contributing on a more equal basis and participating on a more equal basis.
Well, I guess one of the things is that, one of the concerns I had when I was talking to my, or that was raised when I was talking to my, my finance committee was that if we increase the population, the ability to have students at Minuteman, then in Lancaster, students are disproportionately encouraged to go or, or, you know, want to go. Are we going to fill, you know, are we going to go to 60? I mean, are we going to go to 65? It's, the town is looking at an override this year just to balance its budget. So I'd like to figure out a way that we can, I don't want to deny kids this opportunity. I mean, it's fabulous and it's, and I support it completely. But there is some point where the Lancaster budget can't support it. And I hate that fact. I wish the state could support vocational education better than it does. But, you know, we don't, we don't have the fiscal means of some of the other member communities. So that's, that's just where we're, where we are right now. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff had his hand up as well.
So I'm actually going to add a second comment to respond to what I just heard, which is very understandable. One of the motivations for increasing the school to 800, actually, when we first started, was the fact that we are losing out of district students who could reduce, you know, tuition, member tuition and member assessments. So one of the motivations for going to a larger school is to not lose those students, have them come in and to reduce member town assessments. So that's actually where that idea started, as well as we don't want to close out district students who do want to come. So you're, I understand your concerns 100%. You're not wrong, but that is one of, one of our goals. And the original comment I was going to make was, in the event we, we start to deny slots to students from member towns who want to come, then we should have a actual policy on how the slot allocation works. Because otherwise, we'll be said, you're being arbitrary. So I think it's time to develop a, a written policy of how slot allocation works that we can change every year. So we can say, this is our initial policy to do it. We don't, we really cannot anticipate all the challenges in doing this. But here's how we're going to start, is written. And be, be forewarned that we're probably going to change this in a year or two once we have a little bit more history with it. But I think we should have a written policy on it to avoid, in the event we do have to disallow students from coming within the district and people get angry at us. That's it. Thank you.
Alice. Back on mute.
You're off mute now. Now you're on mute.
I think.
Alice, you're on mute.
Can someone unmute me?
You are unmuted now.
Okay, there's another meeting going on in my house. And so my bandwidth is messed up, I think. Sorry. I have, just back when we started, the slot allocation method, the reason for it was to make sure that each town had a minimum number of slots. It wasn't designed for filling the school. It was to ensure that no town didn't have any kids in the school. So it was originally designed for like 25% of the class. Here's how we would fill 25% of the class, make sure every town has at least some seats. That, that was the origin of it. And I believe referencing Jeff's point that last March or so, I think Ed and his administration did develop a document that it was about how they would go through and assign seats. So I think that the problem with the current thing that was in the packet has to do with trying to apply that type of slot allocation method to filling the whole 200 seats, extrapolating from, you know, a smaller number of kids into 200 and not looking at what is the minimum guaranteed number of slots. And I think that's why it ends up punishing the Lancasters and the Stos accidentally because it's being used for a different purpose.
Any other questions or comments? So we will be revisiting this, you know, at our next meeting. Ed, you were about to say something?
No, we will revisit it again. And Dan, did you want me to share the, the update and you can speak to it?
Sure.
Okay. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for letting me do this brief presentation. Dr. B just asked me to give a brief update on the communications and marketing work for the school year so far. The beginning of the year, I put out a, a survey for parents and for students just on how they consume media. And the, the short reason for that was we were thinking about doing some digital ads. We weren't sure of the best platforms. So I just thought this was useful just because the, you know, what we consume for media just changes pretty rapidly. So this just gives a kind of confirming what we already knew, which is where the students are on social media. Of the number one app that they use, which is a tie with Snapchat and TikTok. And number two was Instagram. On the flip side, the parents, the overwhelming majority said Facebook. And number two was Instagram. Let me just actually bring up.
Can you see it?
Yeah, it was 64% Facebook. So it's just sort of a, you know, reminder of, of, you know, where to meet folks. You know, where they're consuming their media. I'm not advocating at all for a Snapchat or anything like that, but it's good, it's good to know. The other point that I thought was important was where they heard about Minuteman. And, and the overwhelming said it was from a middle school presentation. So that just sort of reinforces the work that Anthony's doing. We also did some advertising, really small advertising. We did, Anthony oversaw the direct mailing of five mailers that went to folks in the member towns. We did some really small money, just targeted ads online during the recruitment season. We did an ad in the Colonial Times. We did an ad that's playing at the drive-in event in Lexington through Revolution Food Hall. So Anthony and I have been working closely on those things. We've been putting out, as you probably know, an electronic newsletter. So this is being sent to about 5,400 email addresses that we have. So that includes all students, faculty, staff, parents, prospective parents, and then a wide swath of alumni and stakeholders, whether those are people on the advisory board and businesses. It's doing pretty well. I, I really am a big, my nerd communication role, all the places I've worked, I've been a big proponent of the electronic newsletters. I, I think it's actually sometimes more effective than social media. It goes right into people's inboxes. They have to at least look at it. So we're doing pretty well with about 35% or so opening, just opening. It's just what we want. So, so we're doing okay with that.
Can I, can I butt in for just one second? Have you, are you sending this to the select boards?
Um, I think so. I think for the
Because I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, definitely. I'm sending it to the town managers. And the last, yeah, so I'll, I'll double check that. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's hitting some of them, but probably hasn't been updated in a few months. So I'll look at that.
Well, and they, they change every election cycle. So that's, you know, it's something you gotta, you gotta keep track of. But I think that would be really helpful for the Board of Selectmen and even, you know, depending on the town, but at least if the finance director has it, that would be good too.
100% agree. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just really briefly, I think you guys all saw the videos we put out. We did three professional videos, which got really great responses. And, and I think for, for different, slightly different purposes. One was reopening, you know, in a COVID environment. The other was just a marketing video. And, and then also the video tour of the building. I just also want to briefly give a shout out to the multimedia students. Hold on one second. Hold on one second. I apologize. My dog's at my feet here. So Jack Lyburne and Drew O'Connor's, their students put together these really great three-minute vignettes on each of the shops. And I know Anthony was instrumental in, in that as well. And those have been really great student-produced marketing tools. And also the parents, I think, really liked the video of George's, George Clement's daily announcements on Fridays. He does what's called the High Five Friday, which I think is really great to sort of lift everybody's spirits. Everybody's giving shout outs to one another on some of the nice things or the good work they did for the week. And I know that was a big hit with parents as well. I won't go through all these, but these are just, this is just a list of the press we got mostly in, you know, the very local, small-town newspaper level. We did get a mention in the Globe West, I think, for something. But, you know, that's just an ongoing process. And, you know, I'm a former reporter, media relations person. So this is pretty easy for me to do, to just push out this anytime we have a good story. Just internally, you know, in the COVID environment, the communications really stepped up, whether it's, you know, trying to reinforce or thank people for following protocols, wearing masks, any sort of, you know, message from the nurse's office, et cetera. We're posting all the letters to the website, so they're always in one place. And we also are sending translation notices to, I think we have about 11 students who their native language isn't at home is not English. This is just a very quick overview of social media audiences over the last year and just where we've picked up followers. Facebook, we've seen about a 17% increase. Instagram, a really pretty big percentage, 59% increase. Since that's what seems to be a, a strong medium for both parents and students. And then Twitter seen a, a small increase. We don't, we have about 465 followers. This is just an age breakdown, which I think is always a good reminder. I think for me, as someone in my late 30s, I tend to think everybody's on Facebook. And I have to remind myself, our students are not always on Facebook, but our parents are. Also, there's a gender breakdown. It's a little bit more skewed towards females versus males. I won't go through these, but this is just a quick list of our top posts on Facebook. Facebook has a lot better data on who our users are over the other platforms. So I like to just kind of see what people are interested in. One of the quick themes I, I just found is that we, we have a really engaged group of parents and alumni that love to share or help out if they can. A lot of these were posts for an open house or an parent info session or, you know, showing off the tour of the new building or, you know, kids selling these Christmas trees they made in the metal fab shop. And it was, it just shows that we have a really positively engaged group of folks that follow us. And just very briefly, you know, the, the Minuteman Parent Association has been really stepping up and engaging with us this year. And George, Anthony and I and Dr. B, we've all, you know, attended some of their virtual meetings. And George especially has taken a lot of questions from parents and then just, just communicating with them. You know, in the COVID environment, it's more important than ever to have that two-way communication and feedback. You know, Dr. B said he wants to do another town hall meeting. So we're looking at that soon. We had one that, I want to say we had, what, like 500 people on it?
Over 400 and 200 questions.
That was in September. And then, you know, that's, that's pretty much it. So this is, you know, just a brief update on, on what's been going on. And, you know, happy to share this and answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Dan. Very, very impressive. Let's see, Ford.
Yeah, I really don't have a question because you answered most of them, Dan, because I didn't see Twitter on the first one. And I think it's important that you, you're on that. I, I think you do a great job. You almost have a post on Facebook almost every day, if not maybe four times a week. I, I think you're doing a fantastic job there. And I know the films have all been great, but so I think, you know, you just gotta keep doing what you're doing. I'm, I was trying to sit here and think, what else can you do? And I think you're doing it. I really do. And I think maybe you want to make sure that the, somehow get the guidance people, the admissions and the administrators in the various middle schools connected to this information going out all the time. If you can get their emails, I think that would be important. So, but you know, I think, I think you're doing it. Just try to reach out to the communities. You're on, I was just thinking, you're on the Dover website, but that only takes you to the, to the, to the webpage, you know, somehow. If, I bet if you ask somebody like Dover if they could print a story, they might do it on their website and maybe other towns would. Guess all you can do is ask and the worst answer you'll get is no.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, Ford.
Judy.
Thank you. Thank you. This was, this was great. Thank you so much, Dan. This is a lot of effort, a lot of work. And, you know, you've got the numbers to show the trend and so, so all good stuff. Thank you for mentioning the Colonial Times in Lexington. It's a type of, because it goes to every household and it's free. Usually the, the editors there, they'll take any press release you have, even if they don't publish it, if you just keep feeding it to them. It's, it's a good way to get some press sent, but a different, something a little different. Most of the communities have some type of local media, you know, cable vision, whatever it might be. So I know a lot of nonprofits or schools that even, even if it looks like a flyer, they can just post that. So whether it be the videos, you can push them as a PSA or, you know, just a, you know, so it's, it's like, it's on the screen for two minutes. You know, so just something different, a different.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. I'll definitely look into that.
Thank you, but great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have Michael then Ford?
Yeah, Dan, echoing the others, great job. Are we in touch with enough graduates that we can feature one of them from time to time in the stuff that we send out to? I've, I've always thought our kids are our best advertisement and the successes that, that they, that they come by. Is, is that something we could possibly do?
Absolutely, and we're doing it. We made sure we had alumni in the marketing video. And in every newsletter that's going out, there's an alumni feature.
So that's great.
So yeah, but thank you. That's, that's an excellent point.
Sure.
Okay, Ford.
Yeah, the only thing I want to follow up is what Judy mentioned is, is I think anything that's like five minutes long or longer or send it to the cable television stations. You know, they're begging for stuff right now. I know they're, they're doing a lot of, all their sports and all that that are going on. But, you know, I would just send it to them. I think they'll put it on, like Dover Sherwood, you got cable television. I think, I'm sure they would put it on if they don't let me know.
No, thank you. And actually, Michael, we are working with the Arlington ACMI. They came in and did a story on the Food Link partnership the other day. But I appreciate the cable because sometimes I don't think of that. So I, I do appreciate the suggestion and we'll definitely try to get some more announcements out that they can post.
Yeah, glad to facilitate that.
Yeah, thank you again.
Let's see, Steve, you have your hand up?
I, I just wanted to add in terms of the cable, since, you know, virtually every town has, has public access. And as everybody said, they're looking for programming. Not only they're looking for programming, they tend to show the, the, the same programs over and over again. So you, if you can't sleep at two in the morning, you know, you might even be able to see a Minuteman video at that point. So, you know, it, it does get a complete coverage in the town and, and a lot of people watch it. I was always surprised when I was a town manager, how many people said, hey, I watched the on a meeting. And I said, why, why are you doing that? But, you know, a lot of people do watch.
So you had superintendent Minuteman with you.
Do that one. That's right.
We had a few of those.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you all for the support. And I'm just want to say again, I work really closely with George, Anthony and Ed, who've all been, and Amy, who have all been really supportive of this work. So, thank you.
Okay, Jennifer was trying to see if you were raising your hand or stretching. Ed, anything else under the superintendent's report? Okay.
It's George is up.
Yep. Principal report.
Hey, first item up there is school climate. I think it, I think it continues to be okay, you know, I, I would describe it. Really appreciated the, the vacation. I think people really needed it. There continues to be a lot of support for the schedule change that we made. And I think I reported this last time, but it's becoming more of a reality that we really want to, that is something, the facilitated support time that we've created is something we want to keep. Well, even when we go back, you know, full in-person, it's, so we've been talking about how we're going to manage that structure, what that's going to look like. But it's really been a hit as far as all the faculty is concerned. And I think the kids are taking full advantage of it. We're all feeling very good about that. Kids are more productive, making more connections with teachers. Obviously, we had the incident in DC last week and our faculty again did an outstanding job processing the issues with kids. And, you know, from talking to some kids and, and faculty, it's, you know, the, the student response is really, I, I think, kind of typical of teenagers. You know, you had some, I heard some teachers talking about they had the most profound discussions they've ever had, you know, about life and civics and, you know, all sorts of things. And, you know, I had other teachers say, you know, my, my, you know, my group, they just, we, we talked about it for very, very briefly and they just really weren't, you know, they're kids. Like, yeah, what, can we get to work? We don't really, how does it, you know, so that's kind of the joy of being 16 sometimes, you know, it doesn't really. And especially for these kids, I don't know how many more times we can use the word unprecedented and have it mean anything anymore for them, you know, but, but we got through that.
More days. I said, you only need it for eight more days, I think.
Yeah, so we, we got through it pretty well. I think I, the professionalism is remarkable amongst all the, amongst all the faculty and how they handle that. You know, I think we're experiencing a little mask fatigue at the, at this time. You know, I, we've, Brian and I have been doing some rounds to make sure the kids are wearing masks. I don't know if it's just a sophomore class, which we've had a couple of weeks in a row coming in. Maybe it's just that. It just, but I think that's probably also, you could say that everywhere. I mean, who isn't really a little tired of wearing the mask and whatever else? But I think that's just, just the general kind of malaise that I think we're all feeling, you know, we're all kind of struggling with that a bit. So my, my sense of climate is that it's, it's good, it's okay. You know, we're, we're hanging on better days, you know? We try to do what we can. I don't know if anybody has any questions on climate?
Uh, Jeff.
Just one neurotic observation. Whenever I'm done with a Zoom meeting where there's a lot of people, I feel like I have to go and wash my hands, even though I know that I know I don't have to, but I'm, I'm so well-trained now. I have to, I just have this urge and I go do it, even though I know it's crazy. So that's where, that's where our mindset is now. And God bless the kids and the teachers who are, are still doing a good job on the masks despite.
Okay, now I'm going to wash my hands. What are you doing to me, Jeff?
George, I have a question. Have the mask issues, has it gotten so far that it's led to any disciplinary issues or have you been able to manage it?
We've been able to manage, you know, we had one student a little, little bit ago that we sent home for refusal to wear a mask. But honestly, all the issues had nothing really to do with the mask. You know, the mask is really just a pretext to, you know, to really, as part of a larger meltdown, you know, that we had to deal with. And the kids that, we did a sweep the other day, Brian and I, and, you know, reported back to the faculty. There were only two kids that we saw and, you know, wasn't, they were just below the nose. So it wasn't even like they weren't on. You know, it's just, and this, I could give you a million reasons like they did. Oh, I didn't even, I get it. Fix it. You know, and we reminded the faculty that, you know, if they are experiencing any chronic issues, to please send them down and we will make it a disciplinary issue if we need to. But my, you know, my sense is it's good. You know, I'll hear things that it's, you know, I saw a kid, there's somebody over here or there. We, we try to respond. We can't be everywhere at once. I don't know, but my, my sense is that it's pretty good, I, I think. Although, you know, I do think it's, people are getting tired, which is why last week we heard more of like, hey, I'm concerned about a kid I saw in the hallway without a mask walking down the hall. Okay, well, well, we'll address it. That's what we'll do. As far as the, the hybrid model goes, you know, we continue to look at it and, you know, increasing in-person learning. There, there are just so many moving parts with that. I, I think Dr. B is right. I mean, we're looking, you know, we're looking, it's hard sometimes to sift through all the data with increasing rates of infection. And at the same time, we're talking about bringing more people in and how that will impact. I, so right now, we're, we're sort of just scratching around what it could look like. We know, we, we know we would need subs, but there's so many things that we don't know will change. In starting with, you know, it starts with fundamental issues. Can we fill a bus? Because if we don't, that will impact the schedule. And when you impact the schedule, you're impacting curriculum and instruction. What are the going to rules be around cohorting? Are they the same or are they gonna, are we going to see a change maybe as the, as the vaccine gets out? You know, because again, that will impact curriculum and instruction. So it's, it's, it's a little hard to get too far ahead of yourself as you know that the situation is constantly changing. So, you know, I'm having those discussions, we're, we're talking about things, but we're, you know, wait and see. I really, really am hoping this vaccine will get out and distributed. And I think that, that's the ultimate game changer, really. That's what we need to, to alleviate everyone's anxiety. And there is anxiety out there. I can tell you that we've, we've doubled the amount of kids that are going for remote learning. You know, we're a little under 3%, now we're a little over 6%, you know? So this can, you know, so one, one parent will say, how come I can't get in more? And I have another saying, you know, I'm just not comfortable anymore. Yeah, I get it. So we continue to just, you know, do our best to see, and when the time is right, we will execute.
George, I saw a couple of hands. We have Jeff, then Michael.
Okay, so I understand why people want to move to a hybrid model. And we are moving to hybrid flexible model and Newton. Hybrid flex is when you have, you know, students participating both remotely and in person. So you can actually teach to all the kids at once. And just a few words of caution. One is that, and this was presented to the school committee, moving from full remote to a high flex model means that there is a, a significant hit in the amount of teaching that can occur. So there are all sorts of issues in, in, in that kind of program, even implemented beautifully, which will, will reduce the amount of actual content that a teacher can cover. Fully remote is generally more effective with a content. And the other interesting thing is that the scheduling of hybrid flex is so complicated that Newton has said, if you choose to be remote, you can't change your mind because we cannot, we have to, we have to schedule all the classrooms very carefully. We have to schedule which kids are in and which are out. It's a, you'll probably have to hire 10 people just to do the scheduling to make it work right. And the flexibility of changing your mind has to be eliminated. Because when you're balancing, you know, how many kids can you have in a room at once? And all of a sudden, those numbers change, it doesn't work anymore. So they're kind of saying that if you clist our arm and you're in person, you want to go fully remote, maybe we'll allow that. But a fully remote person who wants to come in, we're not going to allow it at all. And that also brings up the question of when teachers who are remote for medical or whatever reasons, get the vaccine and. get the vaccine and want to come in, that may not be possible to do. Because again, now you've allocated your space to make it safe, remember, you know, only have X number of kids in a room. And so there are all sorts of extremely challenging problems. And a big hit to content, I'm looking, even though I'm staying fully remote, I'm looking at, the hits that I'm going to take, to already reduced content by being remote and dealing with this here, and I'm scratching my hands, what else am I going to cut out now? In the, in the next semester, and that, the people who are actually teaching in the classroom hybrid, they're going to have to cut out even more. So you have all these issues around it, and I know why some parents and kids want to come in, but the disadvantages beyond safety, are enormous, I can tell you that from just personal experience.
Thank you, thank you for that, Jeff, because that's, you are right. One hundred percent, that's been sort of our team talking is wondering, I mean, we can do anything you want, I'm not sure it's going to make academics any better at all, it might actually make it worse, I'm not sure. You know, CTE, on the other hand, you know, it's kind of pre-cohorted, it's a little bit different, the room's space is different. We might have a shot at restoring that, and that's our core mission, so, you could probably, that's a little easier, that still has issues, but not, not nearly what, I mean, academics is just, I, I'm not sure, I agree with, thank you, Jeff, for saying that.
And, and the people who are doing the scheduling, the joke, the joke I tell them is that for all those people, they have, they have two big buckets on either side of them, one contains the excedrin, and the other bucket contains the valium, and they go through half a bucket every day, because I can't even, even though being a computer guy and used to doing this sort of thing, I can't even imagine, the challenges of scheduling this to keep it safe, and God bless you and your team, really, for dealing with this.
Yep.
Hey, thank you, Michael.
Sure, George, thank you for describing the complexity and the extent of what you're dealing with. Could I ask, to the amount that you're able to, can you give us an update from time to time, just a few words, on the different things that you are wrestling with? I'd like to be able to share that with some of the parents that have reached out to me, and, frankly, are not happy with, with the answer, look, we're working on it, it's difficult, we're looking at a lot of things here, we're trying to make it happen, which is the truth, but it just doesn't contain enough pixels to paint the picture for them. And as my wife says, sometimes, I know you're thinking about it, but please turn on the volume and tell me what's going on. Like I said, to the extent that you can, can you give us what you're wrestling with from time to time, so that we can share that?
Sure, a quick one would be, you know, concerns about the buses getting kids in, you know, what effect that will have, if we can't fill a bus, can we order more buses, we'll be in competition with other schools to get more buses. If we don't win that competition, you know, are we having staggered times, are we having kids at home? And then all the things that Jeff just said, if you do have a split classroom with that, you know, how you would deliver instruction.
Sure, what we're doing here is we're pointing out the bullet points here, transportation issues, complexities of trying to deliver, you know, pedagogy, you know, basically, you know, two times over at the same time. You know, a quick summary of those things, I think, would paint the picture, and, if we can't do anything, if we can't make any changes in the present, it would at least tell people what it is we're looking at and trying to do.
Yep, yeah, I can, I can come up with something, I find that when I've talked to a few parents on the phone, you know, like I had a call, I had, twenty-five minute conversation today, talking about some of these things, and, you know, you both walk away, you know, she gets it, your mom gets, she gets it, she's like, yeah, I just wish it wasn't that way, so do I, and if they change a few things, we'll be good.
Okay, any more, any more questions on the hybrid model in person, the scheduling? Okay, you want to move on to the CTE program update?
Yeah, that's going to be a tag team effort with myself, Katie, and I think Dina, Tina's on, right?
And Dee Clark is as well.
Okay. Let me share the screen, so in your packet, I think, is on page thirteen or so. I just wanted to give folks, I wanted to introduce you to Katie Bouchard is our CTE director, as you know. We also have our two engineering, we have both engineering teachers or one engineering teacher, I'll let Katie take care of that.
Got it.
So, my part is just the first couple of slides, then Katie's going to talk about the warehouse racking internally, and then the teachers are going to talk about some of the other equipment we got, and then we'll kind of roll right into the robotics first effort. So you may recall, this is where I usually have to back up three or four times, so let me start way back. We built a warehouse in the new school, and we built a, something called the Toil Lab, the Technology Office Innovation Lab, and we co-located it, in an area near robotics automation and engineering, near advanced manufacturing, near metal fab. So last year, we applied for a half a million dollars of grant funds, received three hundred thousand, and this is just to give you an update on where we are with that. So the project that we got funded has partners, our partner in logistics engineering, and robotics automation expansion is how we characterize it, this is phase one in my mind. Quincy Mon Community College has started a supply chain management certificate program, and they have no place to actually operate the program from a hands-on point of view. So their intention and our discussion has been around QCC using that space in the evening, sort of like as a training facility. UMass Lowell continues to be part of our, our partnership, as well as Able Womack is a company out of Lawrence, I believe. And a couple of other robotic companies that are signed on during the grant development process, which really began about eighteen months ago. From a student point of view, a learner point of view, there's additional credentials, that we will be able to supply our students. Industry four point O, I'll talk about in a second. These are generally in the areas of mechatronics, hydraulics, industry PLC programmable logic controllers, and some other equipment through Festo Didactic Company was the successful bidder. In addition, from a warehousing point of view, there are also additional credentials, forklift operator and logistics technician, these are, these can be offered as short-term training programs through MTI. We've also talked a little bit about all the kids that are in that academy, going through and getting these certificates, sort of like the OSHA ten card, that it's, it's only a, I think it's an eighteen to twenty-five hour certificate. And then there's another organization that provides certificates in, in other areas that we're looking at as well, so it's a really, I call it phase one. Industry four point O, you may have heard the term, it's really the fourth industrial revolution. It involves robotics, artificial intelligence, big data, virtual reality, and some applications. And sort of the ability to rapidly change and respond in a manufacturing environment, to those things that you're learning about your production, as well as different products or systems or processes that need to be put in place. And industry four point O, you recall a year or two ago, I went to Germany, and I visited some schools that were actually, you know, all focused on industry four point O credentialing, which Festo, the company, is kind of a world leader in this credentialing. And you'll see their systems and their equipment in universities and colleges and in companies. So Katie, you want to talk a little bit about the, this part of it, where are you?
Sure.
There you are.
So these are some pictures of the warehouse, so over the past couple of months, as you can imagine, it went from just a big empty space, to all of a sudden, we now have some racking systems that you'll see in there. We have a couple more pictures there, on the right side of the screen was the shuttle. So again, this is more indoor racking, it goes on both sides of the warehouse, which is really nice right now for additional storage. And then on the outside, that's the shuttle machine.
Yeah, which is sort of a vertical warehouse, hold a lot of stuff that can be programmed.
Yep, myself, Jean, Dee, Tina, we all went to a training on the shuttle system, just kind of an initial get to know how it works. It's super cool, you press in like a numbered shelf that you want, it'll go grab the shelf, bring it down, it'll have all these different totes on the shelf, and it'll actually organize whatever you're trying to store, so if you're putting back a screwdriver, it'll tell you it goes in bin six, it'll actually highlight where that bin is with a red light, you put your tool there, and then you have the shelf go back up and be stored into the system, which is pretty cool. And then this is outside, just a lot more storage area for the racking. And then we have Tina Collins, who is our robotics teacher, who's going to be speaking about some of the industry-recognized certifications.
Thank you, Katie, so, to piggyback on to what Dr. Quillen was talking about for certifications, by the end of February, we've already started getting trained ourselves to be able to certify the students, by the end of February, we'll be able to certify four out of the nine certifications. One of them's on the line item electricity, even though you see eight line items there, electricity has two, so, we'll have four out of nine by the end of February to be able to train the students. Two students have started this week, the training for electricity, and they should be able, ready to test by the end of the year. And the students are very, very excited about it, and they're already starting to use a lot of the new equipment, the hydraulics. And when Anthony comes around with an open house, the other day, we actually had some of the, a couple of circuits open, and families loved it, and the kids are super excited, the energy is exciting for everything. We're still in the process, there was a lot of equipment, of commissioning some of the equipment, and making sure that, thank you, we have everything that was on, that came with the grant. So the students are helping organize that, categorize that, and, it's, it's very exciting, the vision's excellent. When I was in industry, I had heard of Festo, I know it's in the Honda Corporation, so, I'm excited to be a part of this.
Great, thank you, Tina.
Any questions about that?
How do I do this in my own house?
Very expensive.
I'd love to be able to put the screwdriver back in the right bin. Oh, that'd be perfect, all right.
Uh, Michael?
Sure. I'd like to take a step back and ask for an accurate way of saying, in one sentence, this is the combination of science, technology, artificial intelligence, electronics, that allows, X corporation or X industry to do Y fantastic things you don't even know about, and produce Z products or Z timing, timing to delivery. This is the way the business world works, and this is what we're teaching our kids.
Okay, so this next slide, Deanna Clark has joined us as well, she is our engineering teacher, and she's also the advisor for the STEM in Robotics First Club.
Excuse me, hi, everyone, like Katie said, my name's Dee, and I'm really excited to be here and tell you guys a little bit about, our new first robotics competition team, which is also a combination with like a STEM club, as well as a revamp of the existing Girls in STEM Club. Um, so first, this is really awesome program, I've actually been participating since I was a junior in high school. So this will be my tenth season and my eighth as a mentor, and it's actually what led me to do education, so it's such a really special program, and it's so inspiring and impactful, and it's what made me want to be an engineer when I was in high school, so it's really cool to be able to bring that to our Minuteman students as well. So first, which is actually an acronym that stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, is a worldwide competitive robotics program for students in grades nine through twelve, so basically how it works, is starting in January each season, teams are tasked with building a robot to play a specific game. And the games are very involved, there's really high-level strategy. And in addition to really challenging mechanical design, pieces, there's also programming, electrical and wiring, it brings so many different aspects to, which is one of the reasons I love it so much. And so, in a non-COVID year, right, we build the robot, and then we go out to local and regional, and then, you know, all the way to the worldwide competition, which is held in Detroit, Michigan. But for this year, it's a little bit different, so they've kind of modified the game to be a, things that you can really do at home or in small social distance groups. So we're going to be taking advantage of some of the advisory periods with each grade for the students that are interested. Um, and then a little bit about the Girls in STEM revamp, so we're going to be incorporating this really awesome organization called Girl Up, into the FRC team, and it's going to kind of be a sub-team to provide that safe space, for girls to really support each other in STEM, and, you know, talk about some of the struggles that we face, and how we can, empower each other and rise above, and, you know, really defend gender equality in the STEM world. And what's cool about Girl Up, being a United Nations organization, is you have this really cool ability to reach literally people worldwide. I helped start up a girl-up club based in Littleton, and one of the cool projects we did was if we, we are challenged to raise a thousand dollars, and then that thousand dollars went to build a classroom for refugee girls in Uganda, so, it's some, a group you'd never be able to interact with, and it's cool to be able to make that worldwide impact while supporting each other. So I'm really excited about all of these different components and what we're going to bring. So we've actually already gotten started, we had an information session last week, and I was so excited, there were, about twenty-five kids there from seven different shops, and our numbers are just going up. When their friends find out, oh, I want to get involved, so it's this really great way to kind of, bring our shops together in a time where we're a little bit divided, even when we're in person, you know, we got to stay in our shop, so it's really kind of, I think, going to unify us a little bit, and we're going to build an awesome robot and compete, and it's going to be great, so. Um, yeah, I think that really kind of covers the program, do people have specific questions, or I think there was a video we wanted to play as well?
Yeah, I don't have that.
I have it, if people, I can share it, if, if not, we can skip it too, though, whatever works.
Yeah, how long is it?
Um, it's three, two minutes.
Yeah, I watched it.
And we want to see it.
Okay.
Share your screen.
To see it.
Let me see if I can, yeah.
Julia, can you give Dee?
So, um, this is the, basically the game animation for kind of the challenge that we got this year, so we're going to be building a robot to play this game.
Do you have the ability to share?
Is the sound coming through?
The sound is, but you're going to have to go up and right-click, where is it? When you go to share screen, you go up onto the three dots on the far right, and you share computer sound, do that.
Okay.
And then make sure you click on the screen that's showing that.
There we go, okay, thank you.
There you go.
All right, perfect.
Infinite recharge! An incoming asteroid shower is aimed at First City! Using Alliance droids, planetary citizens collect and score power cells, while traversing the trench run and boundaries to ensure maximum protection with an operational shield generator. Droids start on an initiation line, and may be preloaded with up to three power cells. Droids operate autonomously during the first fifteen seconds, in an attempt to score power cells into any of their three available power ports. While every power cell deposited adds equal charge to the shield generator, higher power ports earn more points. Drivers then control their droids for two minutes and fifteen seconds of teleoperated time. Power cells are collected from one of the five chutes in the loading bay, and then driven across the city to be scored in the low, outer, and inner ports. Droids must score the required number of power cells to activate sections of their shield generator, and then either rotate their control panel a specified number of times, or position it to a specific color. Near the end of the match, droids race to their rendezvous point to make their shield generator operation- Near the end of the match, droids race to their rendezvous point to make their shield generator operational. Alliances are awarded bonus points for a level generator switch. The alliance that earns the most points wins the match. May the force be with us all.
Wow, I am in awe.
That's fun, huh?
Yeah, it's going to be a blast. The kids are really excited about it.
Awesome.
And so any, um, any questions or comments?
Judy has a question.
Judy.
Thank you. That looks, I wish I had that in high school. Could I ask, so you have so far 25 students, would that be one team or does it be break up into different teams?
Yeah. So that, that's one team. Um, and basically kind of how we're breaking up is everyone's, we're having a bunch of sub teams. So you have like your CAD and design, your manufacturing, your programming, your electrical. And then, um, even on the non-technical side, um, you also, you know, first teams are encouraged to do a lot of community outreach. Um, and mentoring of younger robotics teams like middle school levels. So there's going to be a lot of opportunity for growth in both the technical and the non-technical areas. And it's really cool because then every student kind of has their little piece of the pie, their leadership role that they're responsible for contributing. So it really is a full team effort.
Team is definitely the word. Um, and my last question please is, um, do you, does a team have a name? Is it just Minuteman or I saw there was a number there or?
Yeah. So, um, the kids are throwing around some names. I think Win It Man is one of them. Which is a good one. Um, Minute Maid Robotics, like maybe something with the lemonade. Um, I don't know. But, um, so I'm going to, once we kind of get like that full roster, I'm going to have them decide and vote because I really want it to be something they brand and, and, and make their own as like the founding members. But I, I think Win It Man or Minute Maid Robotics are in the mix right now as like the top contenders.
Well, enjoy. This sounds like
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited.
Thank you. Any other questions and or comments?
Thank you, Tina. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Katie, Tina, Dee. We so appreciate you coming, taking the time to come tonight and your presentations, what you're doing is just awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Glad to be here.
Take Saturday off.
How nice of you. Okay, moving on to finance report. Um, who is going to start?
Uh, Steve's going to start.
Yeah, I, I can kick it off. Uh, finance committee, uh, met last Monday and, uh, we reviewed the latest iteration of the superintendent's budget, uh, which I think will be presented, uh, to you right now. Uh, I, I, in general, the, um, uh, the finance committee is supportive of the recommended budget, but we wanted to, uh, get a little feedback from the rest of the committee. So, uh, uh, I, I believe Ed will be walking the presentation through and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, I'm getting good at this, huh? There's no music or anything with this, but so the theme last year was managing our success. This year we're talking about preparing for reality. So just a reminder to the, to the, the committee is that, you know, COVID had impacts this year on our FY21 budget. We were one of the fortunate regional schools that had a fully approved budget before July 1 and didn't have to go through the 112 budget challenge, but we did have to reduce staff. We had increased costs with PPE. We had to adapt transportations, adapt to remote learning. I think adapt is probably the bumper sticker there. Um, we did put in some additional enhancements with a nurse and additional counseling on call. And then the state had different requirements, um, as we went along.
I'll call you back later.
We did eliminate, um, community education.
Uh, excuse me, Ed. Um, if you're not speaking, could you please put yourself on mute? Thank you.
We did eliminate community ed, which was our, you know, avocational programs in the evening. And we've had no rental income. The schoolwide goals for 21, 22 are, are, have pretty much been the same goals we've had for eight or nine years. Um, they get reviewed every year. You know, wordsmithing sounds like we don't do some important thinking about it, but we do. Um, and obviously our number one goal is a healthy campus. Assumptions that we made going forward for this budget is that we believe COVID is going to be with us at the fall, in the fall of 2021. We're going to have to have some form of remote learning or hybrid learning in place. Um, we don't really know what the state and federal funding is going to be. We're hopeful. Um, we're going to get the MSBA bonding completed. We're going to finish borrowing for the, the big school project. We do have a situation that we know is going to continue where we have more applications than we do space. We're beyond the design enrollment capacity, less than a year into the building. So Jeff alluded to the 800 capacity plan and it's going to be a cost effective way to increase, um, enrollment. Overall, the budget of the operating budget is, is up very responsibly, only 2.4%. Um, our capital obviously is where we've had the big increases, but those increases, especially when it comes to the project debt, have been increases. We've been telling the towns about for years, literally years. And we're pretty much right on, right on what we said it would cost. The only addition to all that has been the athletic field, uh, alternate lighting. And as we know, we're a few days away from having that approved by virtue of non-disapproval. Uh, this budget, the FY22 budget, I believe funds our priorities. Uh, protecting student and safety, uh, staff health. Also adding the, uh, the animal science program and expanding the logistics engineering probe that we just talked about. In this FY22 budget, there is a full-time logistics engineering, uh, position funded and a full-time animal science, uh, vet assisting program. So, so this is a little bit more detail about the capital debt budget impacts. This first one really has to do with the bonding for the, the fields as well as continuing to pay our ESCO lease down. Um, and then the school building debt service, uh, we're hoping to, or we're not hoping, we will at some point in the fiscal year and at some point in this calendar year, go up for final borrowing to complete the project. And this budget also, you remember our, our, uh, our handy dandy capital stabilization fund, which we originally created six years ago in order to fund what we believed would have been an, an underfunded equipment budget based upon the MSBA formula. The MSBA formula is the same for FFNE, furniture fixtures, equipment. It's like $1,200 or $1,400 a kid, whether you're in a middle school, an elementary school or a vocational school. So we put over the years, money into that. We have almost 1.3 million in there now, which you voted back in June to put towards the fields. So, um, this funds an additional $260,000 back into the capital stabilization fund to begin putting aside money and maybe using it for the cap, uh, 800 capacity plan. Some of the big drivers in the budget was obviously we're in year two of a three-year collective bargaining agreement.
So Ed, can I just interrupt? So the, the whole issue of the, um, not having the MSBA funding, we got a grant to fund that. It wasn't that MSBA all of a sudden decided to fund it.
No, you know, with all the kindness in my heart, we had to, we had to take care of ourselves.
Right. No, I just wanted to clarify that it, it didn't, it wasn't a manna from heaven that all of a sudden MSBA decided that vocational tech deserved something that it wasn't allocating. I, I just want to be clear that's where, why the funding came through ultimately.
It came through, through five different grants
Right.
over four fiscal years.
No, it was amazing. I just, I, I want to make it clear for the people that weren't on the board at the time where, where that money came from. Thank you.
Oops. Uh, one thing that bothers me to no end is why are heat electrical and heat utility costs are running so high? Part of it's COVID because, you know, the building is empty. We're running the HVAC at a much higher seat CFM, you know, cubic foot per minute, as has been recommended. We don't have enough bodies creating their own BTUs. So I don't know, but this bothers me. We're looking into it constantly. Um, because this is above what we said we would be paying for utilities. Also maintenance contracts on our new equipment. We found that it was cheaper to contract with the manufacturers um, to maintain some of the higher tech, new HVAC related equipment. Um, and it also keeps our warranties moving forward. Our property insurance went up. Obviously we're in a, a building that has slightly more value than the other one. We did realize a, a decrease in health insurance. This is my 14th or 15th budget. I've never said that before. But it's because there's a net reduction in, in staffing still. And our transportation is under because we had originally bid higher and Bob and, uh, one of our consultants got more competitive bidding, which was below what we had budgeted. So that's a good thing. This is admissions and enrollment. You've heard this story before. We're up to 215 applications in the far year of graduation to 2025. Um, you can see the out of district applications are up around 57 right now, I think. No, maybe they're more than that, but it, we're, we're still experiencing, you know, wonderful interest in Minuteman. Need to keep it, keep it up for sure. Our special ed enrollments are running the way they normally do, but 46% of the kids are on an IEP. These are budget drivers that I'm talking about. Enrollment admissions priorities is sustain our member enrollment. Uh, change perceptions, continue to work on what we just talked about. Increase video content. Dan kind of worked through this. One of the things we're doing in the middle school is something called the WOW program, World of Work, uh, which will get us down into the sixth and seventh grade. And because of the change in the Carl Perkins law that went into effect this past fiscal year, we can use our Perkins money in the middle schools to a greater degree, degree than we could before for career development. So we're going to use that to support our marketing and missions enrollment goals. This is another overview of the operating and capital increases. You can see, although that's a small amount of, I'm pointing at it. You can't see it. I have to go like this. Okay. It's a big percentage, but it's not a huge amount of money, but this is where the big money is in the, in the building project. These are the components that, um, create the assessment to the member towns and it's listed in a way that, um, town managers like to see. You can see that the, we are still charging the non-member towns, the ex-members, the former members for that. So it's fun to send them a bill. Especially when it's for non-resident tuition. And it's really fun when it's a capital fee. So these are just looking a few years out. You know, the school project debt payments, I think are peaking in FY23, not much more than they are now, but they will. Um, we're looking at this year decreases in state aid and reimbursements. Uh, because of the increase in, in member town enrollment, the minimum local contributions from the member towns are going to increase by nature of the chapter 70 formula. And as we talked about earlier, we're, we're, we're planning on a decrease in mem- non-member revenue, but, um, we'll see, but I think it's best to plan, uh, plan for the worst. That's, that's it. Uh, that concludes. Are there any questions? There are a lot. I see Jeff.
Okay, a few comments. Uh, one comment is that, um, it is possible that officials in a number of member towns may be unhappy with their assessment this year. Uh, and the, the primary reasons they're going to be unhappy with it because they're sending more students and they're sending them at, at, uh, a full freight. Because we have fewer out of district. And secondly, because the debt is, uh, the debt level is approaching its maximum. I'm happy to defend this though, as long as our debt levels match our expectations. We've, we've told about them for years and I believe that they do. So despite, I, I expect some unhappiness, uh, I, I, I'm not unhappy. Uh, I mean, it, it would be best, of course, if, uh, assessments were lower and the state did more of their responsibility, but this is the way it is. And I do expect to have some, a pushback because of these numbers, but I'm perfectly happy to, uh, be able to discuss these things with people and say, this is what we told, we told you and, and, um, you agreed to and look at the great building and look at all your students who are taking advantage of it. And we're going to have to have that discussion, I think, in some of our towns. Um, I want to also point out that in this year, despite COVID, there are a few, uh, uh, very important opportunities that you're taking advantage of, which I consider like, um, I don't know, icing on the cake is not the right turn. It's beyond that. I'm referring both to the athletic fields and our compromise on the athletic fields that I'm very happy with. And the possibility of raising enrollment to 800 at a relatively low cost. And what I want to point out is that the reason that we can do that is because of, um, good prior decisions and good management, decisions and management that happened many years ago have led to the, the, the time in which we can take advantage of these opportunities if we choose to do so. I'm extremely happy to see that. And the third comment is that, um, maybe COVID will have an impact in the fall. You have to plan for it. But, uh, Mr. Half Cup Empty here is still saying, maybe not. Maybe in the fall, we will really be at the point in which we, yeah, there's going to be some lingering impacts, but we are basically beyond it. I'm hope, I'm hoping, but you, you gotta plan the other way. I understand it. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Jennifer.
So I think a 2.5 or 2.4% increase in the operating budget is something I can sell to, to my town. I, my town's asking for a 5% decrease in everybody's operating budget, but they're not expecting that from school systems. But I think that that is a really reasonable number. I mean, I think the capital we've known about for years. We also know about the field project. We just went through that. I'm really impressed with what the administration has come forward with to, to make this palatable to our, to our towns. I think you know, going forward for Lancaster, I think the one thing is sharing some of this responsibility with other, our other member communities. But I, I think this is something I can sell. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Alice?
Um, I agree with Jennifer. I think it's a very understandable budget. I like it. Um, 2.4% operating increase is easy to talk about. I also think it would be worth when we talk about the budget with them, um, you including that some of your, uh, just the presentation just before, when you talk about the new technical, uh, shops and stuff. Because, um, I think if we generate some excitement in the select board about what they're supporting with the budget, I think they would be really excited to, um, you know, it's, it wouldn't just be, oh, here's a budget. It'd be more like we are really behind this really exciting thing, you know? So I would, I would encourage you to share that as well.
Yeah. As we get towards, as we start building our town meeting presentations, which, you know, we try to customize it with that, with kids from the town and we're, we're kind of, I think we're better prepared this year for that. Certainly Dan's work has, has given us a lot of, a lot of B-roll.
Other questions or comments? Uh, Judy?
Thank you. Um, first budget with you, Ed. So thank you so much. I appreciate this. Um, 2.4 I think is very palatable. Um, so thank you for your diligence in getting this together. Um, again, first time of the budget process for Minuteman. So, um, I'm just going to ask one preliminary question. When you're looking at the assessment components, um, I noticed that even though this year, uh, because of negotiation, you had a decrease in the transportation, um, line item. But, um, for FY21 to 22, there's, um, a, a little bit of a hike. You're anticipating because of growing enrollment, um,
A hike, a hike in what exactly?
The transportation assessment.
Uh, for Lexington or for overall?
No, overall. Uh, slide 14. No, overall, slide fourteen. Yes, right there, was the thirty-nine plus percent.
I think, Bob, can you see that?
Yes, I can. And I'm going to pull up a spreadsheet, the transportation, the hike in transportation is a result of our assessment formula. And while we use the four-year rolling average, the increases in student attendance are what are increasing the assessment portion of that. So I guess that's the easiest way I can explain it, when we have the budget book, you'll see the assessment page and you can see the formulas as to how the transportation and operation assessment share was calculated. But it's, it's, it's a formula-based calculation that we use.
Okay.
But were we, we were penalized because we did not pay as much last year's?
Yeah, our reimbursement is going to be less because we didn't spend as much.
Right, so that we're penalized this year for that, right?
Yes, and also the foundation budget requirements went up for our member districts. So the state, the state is expecting our member districts to pay more as far as the minimum assessment. And then it doesn't quite impact our transportation assessment because at least we have the rolling average to help that. But that is really impacted by just student enrollment.
Yeah, so this is the net piece, so our, we spend one point three million or so, one point one two or something on transportation and we're assuming, I think, a sixty-seven percent reimbursement rate.
Right.
So yeah, when you couple the addition, the the added requirement for minimum local contribution, what we got for less, not spending as much this year, it does bump up. But we're hearing we're going to get eighty percent, so who knows, we might be all right by the time June comes around. But of course, we've been hearing.
Have you been dreaming? I'm sorry.
Yes, but not today.
I'm trying to be the glass is half full, but I'm, I'm heart.
Well, you and Jeff balance out, so just.
Thank you for that explanation, you can see how I, it just kind of, for me, jumps out of the page a little bit.
Yeah, well, we're happy to go over it with you, you know, one-on-one, go through it before town meeting.
And I think that it actually helps for each town to go through this for their own, because every number is very different and each number is tweaked a little bit for each town based on what's happening in the state and in the, in the district, so I think it helps if each of us reach out to Bob and Ed and say what's happening for us specifically, so we can talk to our member communities.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, Jennifer, let's see, I have no, I, were you done Judy, or did you have more?
One more question, please, so you did mention the budget book. So is that something that every member can get?
Yeah, we, we print, well, I don't know how many we'll print this year, but we usually print several thousand because when we go to town meeting.
Yeah.
We and I think in Lexington, we actually send it out in a PDF through the town meeting member listserv.
So I guess my question is, because that's still in draft form, so once we approve the budget, we would all receive a copy?
Oh, yeah, we'll probably have a draft for the, the public hearing.
Terrific, in two weeks, okay.
In two weeks, yeah.
So on, on that question, how soon do we want to communicate this information, we want to wait until the next meeting, until the budget hearing meeting?
Well, we have a FinCom meeting coming up before the school committee meeting. You know, my hope is that we have the budget book or a draft of the budget book and the proposal prepared for FinCom, so that you can see it, definitely, we have to have it before the budget hearing, so at the bare minimum.
Well, I'm just asking, because this is, this is a public hearing, so, or a public meeting, so this, these numbers are out, so.
Yeah, I sent, I sent them to all the town managers.
Okay.
I sent them to you and then about eight hours later, I sent them to all the town managers.
Okay, because I just, I, our FinCom tends to be the, the most powerful financial group in the, in the town, and I'd like, I don't want them to feel slighted.
Yeah, I sent Arlington smelling salts with theirs, so.
So are we free to send these to people, or is this? Do we want to wait till the budget, but, okay, thank you.
No, 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 yeah, as long as you underline it's preliminary.
Right, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
A practical question for Ed. Do you believe that the towns have their act together sufficiently that we will have our budget by the appropriate time this year? Last year was like cliffhanger. So do we have to like pushing these people a little bit, or do you think that they understand?
It, it really won't matter to us, I mean, some of you probably know better when you're holding your town meetings. I know Lexington last year was the first one who really did a online remote town meeting. I mean, I was on some of those first few painful sessions.
Well, we did a good job, come on, come on.
I tell you, by the time it was done, amazing.
Yeah.
But I heard some towns like Concord, you're not going to, you pushed it out till June now?
Middle, the middle of June, because they want to do it on the football field and nice weather. So.
And Lexington is March twenty-second is when we begin.
Right.
Yeah, I think Acton is pushing it out to June as well.
So what, what is our date that we have to have this done by?
Well, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Yeah. I think we'll be okay, we're, you know. I think last year, eight of the nine towns voted before June thirtieth, so the only one that didn't was, was it Concord? Yeah.
Ahead in September.
Alice has a question? Oh, I'm just reading.
It was just.
No, now you're back on mute.
Can you use the chat? So just to go over the process.
Oh, hold on, Alice is off mute now.
Okay.
Sorry. There's something wrong with my system. I was just gonna say, Stowe is very late and I have no idea this year.
Okay, any other questions on the budget, we'll have the budget hearing, which will be in a webinar format. And, you know, who knows if we'll have people who ask questions or not, we usually have a small handful. We'll adjourn from the public hearing and then we'll have a regular albeit shortened school committee meeting where you would vote the budget.
So here's a question, do you, I I could have my FinCom, my director of finance on that budget hearing, she doesn't show up in Lexington when we usually have them in person, but would you prefer her to be there for any questions?
You know, what we're used to is going to your town and spending time with just them.
Okay.
So we can answer their questions.
Specifically.
Yeah, I mean, we try to get all that done before the public hearing. We're a little bit earlier than we were last year with the public hearing, but so if you can get us onto a meeting, you know, so we don't have to drive all over the place now, this is great, you know, in some ways.
Well, nobody has to go to Lexington, which makes people from Lancaster happy, but yeah, so, okay, so I will, I will notify Cheryl that we're having this on the twenty-sixth and then hopefully we can have all her questions answered before the hearing at all. Thank you.
Be great, yeah. So and, and the officers and I are working on the agenda for that business meeting, if you will, where we'll take care of the PV contract and some other items.
Oh, can I have one more, can we send the budget thing just as a separate PDF so that we can, I can forward that to her?
Presentation, you mean?
Yeah, exactly, because it's part of the, it's part of the school committee packet. Can you just send it as a separate thing, thank you.
I'll send it to Julia now and she can send it to the entire school committee again.
Okay, Judy, do you have another question?
It is a follow-up, please, just for something, the conversation thread that you and, that and Jennifer were having, so so we're anticipated that we have one public hearing and then we vote immediately after the, for the, the public hearing.
Correct.
I asked, is there any reason why we need to do it so quickly? In case were questions from the public hearing that needed to be? You know.
We need to do it quickly because it's in our regional agreement. Because Lexington moved it earlier, we originally were going to have it in February. But we, I think it's sixty days before the first town meeting, we have to have our budget approved by the school committee, which, and in order to have it approved by the school committee, we need to go through a public hearing.
No, the public hearing, I understand, I just didn't know we voted immediately after a public hearing. So, so thank you, clarifying, just clarifying, thank you so much.
Well, Judy, I think this is important for you to, because Lexington is the reason we need to do this so quickly, so.
Sorry folks.
No, 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 it's not your fault, we used to have Belmont, so it's not your fault.
Lincoln.
No, oh, Lincoln, I'm sorry. So you just need to make sure you communicate to your people between now and the twenty-sixth, what's in that fly, what's, what's in that document. So you, you can have the questions you need answered at that public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So that we can, we can make sure that whatever their concerns are, are addressed before we vote.
The other thing I would add is that it's a, a long and rigorous process, the FinCom has seen multiple iterations of this budget. This is actually version nine, Dr. McQuillan's really worked hard to get it down to a two point four percent increase in the operating budget, it started out well over that, so the process is to work with our FinCom first, bring it to our school committee now, so you have chances to think about it and, and then get the budget passed.
Yeah, no, thank you, this is, again, I'm still on that learning curve, so thank you all for, for the helpful hints.
Okay, any other questions? I see Jennifer Hewitt, you have a question, could you, since this is not part of public comment, could you put it in the chat? Thank you. Okay, Steve, anything else that you want to?
No, I just to iterate, we're iterate what Jennifer said, you know, I, I worked with Ed for a lot of years as a town manager and you know, every, every year I was always amazed at how how well put together a Minuteman budget was, and it still continues that way, and he does a terrific job, he and, he and Bob, so very happy with the work they've done.
Thank you.
Okay. Shall we move on to subcommittee reports, some policy?
Am I off mute?
You're all set.
Okay, thank you. So it's, it's a lot of, of policies, but I think we can get through them in a very routine manner. I want to give Dr. Perrow the floor first because she's going to speak about the policy archiving, which is what we all wanted for Christmas.
Okay, hi, everyone, so if you've been on the Minuteman website at all recently to the school committee section or page, you'll see it's been updated. Dan O'Brien and Julia did an amazing job in a very short amount of time organizing it, getting it up to date. It's very streamlined and a little bit more user-friendly, you can find the information you're looking for and all the information you're looking for, minutes or agendas, they all are in the same format now and they kind of all look consistent. It looks like a much more sort of professional put-together website and they both did a great job on that. The policy section of it is the same. So right now, our online policy manual is completely up to date. The paper copies that Julia has is the, actually the official policy book is hard copy and Julia has that, that's up to date. Alice has our backup official paper copy and that's up to date now. And then moving forward, we have a few things on the docket where we're going to take the policy manual that we have now, that's a PDF on the website and work to get it in a more interactive way using OneNote, which is what we use to archive the minutes for all the subcommittee meetings and the main school committee meeting as well, so you'll be able to search for policy either by name or by function code and it'll bring you right to that document, it'll make it much again, more streamlined and quicker and easier to use, I'm really excited, I'm excited about how much work Dan and Julia have been able to do in such a short amount of time, it already looks better, it already is easier to use. And just continuing to move forward in that process, it's, it's going to, going to be great. As exciting as a policy manual can get, it's going to be great.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Perrow, and I want to just say again how happy I am that that is the case, because now we can move on and we can kind of start moving through the policies again, which is really important, so we're going through section I and we're comparing the policies in section I to the ones in MASC and seeing where we're missing policies, where ours are out of date, with, you know, things like that. That's a, a big effort by Judy especially, Judy is a rock star with documents, so just so you know. And then we have tonight, three from section J and one from section B. So in order to get through these in an orderly fashion, we're going to start with section J. We have three policies that used to kind of be all rammed into the homeless policy, which is very old. So if you start around page forty-three or so, I think. Hang on. Forty-four, okay, so that first one there is homeless students, the original one, JFABD that we have is something from two thousand eleven or two thousand nine, it's really old, it's down on page fifty-something. Fifty, yeah, fifty, so if you, that's the old one, you can see that it was updated in two thousand eleven. So it kind of covered a little bit of the other two policies in J that we're looking at now. It, but not really in a thorough manner, and MASC went and updated their policies in two thousand nineteen. So what we want to do first is we want to take a motion, by the way, I received no comments on any of these. We want to take a motion to approve the first of these, which is I'm, hang on, I'm getting there. JFABD, homeless enrollment rights and services, do we have a second? Okay, so now we can talk about it.
Okay, Jeff, you have a question?
I have an observation. So whenever we do these, a lot of these policies and I kind of initially dread going to them because they're dense, there's a lot of words, a lot of them are and things that I, I don't have any expertise in and it, and it's hard to do. But what usually happens and happened today more than normal is I go through it and I say, gee, this really is astonishingly important, I never thought of some of these things, so each of these things means there's an incident that somebody observed of something wrong and they had to put in the policy. And I'm looking especially on this one, JFABD and all the items that it, it covers. Sharing the housing of other persons, living in hotels, hotels, trailer parks, living in emergency transitional shelters, being abandoned in hospitals, living in public or private places, not designed for ordinary use as sleeping accommodations, living in cars, parks, migratory children living in conditions described in the previous examples, and then I wake up a little bit, when I see this stuff, jeez. This stuff is painful to go through. But it just struck me of how important it is for especially some of these policies to make a statement as to how we are supposed to be treating these children. So that's just an observation today, when I was spending a, you know, a couple of hours preparing for this meeting, that, you know, got, kind of got me energized to finish reading through them and then finishing the minutes, and I think that every once in a while, it's it's useful to reflect on that, and that's, I just wanted to, because it came up in my mind today to bring it up, I have no problem with any of these policies, so. To bring it up. I have no problem with any of these policies. So I'm just brought that up. That's it. Done.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, are we ready to move to a roll call vote? Oh, wait, no, Michael.
Uh, it, it just occurred to me that if we agree with what Jeff just said, that we are all in agreement. Uh, on, on all of them, can we move them together as, as one vote?
Um, it depends on whether you, anybody might have a question about foster care or. Military children, I mean.
I would have to redo my. Move motion.
Think we're gonna take more time talking about than we will taking the votes.
Right.
It's a little tedious, but I think we should go through them one by one. Okay, anything else? Okay. Um, we'll start the roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Uh, Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Thank you very much and thank you to Dr. Perot for bringing us policy which. Essentially ready to vote on instantly. So the next one is J F A B E. We're going to also vote to at the end of this to remove the existing one for that homeless thing. J F A B E, this is about military children. Um, I don't believe there are a number, a large number of children who are military families, but. Military families tend to move around a lot. The kids get moved around and. Um, this is, uh, new, um, in the MASC roster of policies. We should create a motion to approve. J F A B E for first reading.
I will move and should we do in the same motion, remove the previous one?
No, there is no previous one. They didn't have one.
Okay, so I will move to accept this one.
Second. Great.
Any discussion? Okay, let's move to a roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, thank you again. The next one is J F A B F. This one is for educational opportunities for children in foster care. Um, again, a separate group of children, not homeless, not military, but in a special situation. Um, and again, this is MASC October 2019. We should get a motion for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I have one question about this is that if the children move out of foster care, what, how does that affect their ability to stay in the district? I tried to read it, but I didn't, I didn't understand there that.
Perot, I think.
Yeah, um, they get to finish their year. So if, um, for educational stability, if they are in foster care in. And in Minuteman and then they move out or they move out of district, um, they finish the year that they're in and then they would enroll in their. New school of origin.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. The next one is J F A D B D homeless students, the existing policy. We want to remove it from the manual. When the second reading is done.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Okay, then the last one is B E D H. Um, section B is a section which includes a lot of things like. Bylaws and rules of order, things like that. Um, it's all out of date. Uh, the first one we're looking at is B E D H. This is, um, was emailed to separately. And it is, uh, was developed using the MASC language, um, and some language from council. We have an existing B E D H policy, which is. I don't think that was actually sent to you. Um, but it is. From 2009. And in fact, the law that it was based on has been repealed. So we do need to update this one. I went and looked up the references and I was like, oh my God, it's gone. So, um, anyway. Uh, B A D H, B E D H, uh, this one is interesting because it has been reviewed, um, by the school districts council. Um, and we asked them specifically to integrate into it, some, uh, language relating to, um, online, uh, meetings. So if you look in section one. Uh, of it, you'll see that in the middle it says, oh no, that's not the one, sorry, section three. There's a sentence there for remote meetings. Public comments should be submitted in advance to chair and relayed by the chair during the meeting. Um, and then the last one is, uh. Whoops. Uh, where is it? It's in the last one, eight. The meeting host, uh, or the meeting host for any remote attendees. This is a. Conglomeration of, of stuff from MASC's language, um, reviewing our own language and then having the school district council review it as well. So what we're proposing here is to. A first reading of B E D H, this new draft, and then, um. We will eventually delete B E D H, the one that exists, and then we will also. Be coming back with some types of procedural direction for the chair. Follow this policy. Because it's a very complicated policy. And, um, you need some type of. Procedural document that's in English.
So I can move the original policy, the new policy, but do you want me to move to? Remove the old one? Or wait until the second reading?
Let's wait to the second reading.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve this initial reading, the first reading.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, Steve?
Yeah, and, and reading, uh, section six, um. I'm wondering if it makes sense if we added, uh, uh, that the school committee will not. Vote on any item that's brought up as well, because, you know, it's been my experience when, when people come under citizen comments are expecting a board. To take action and, you know, clearly it's not on the agenda, so we really shouldn't be taking action. So I don't know if we need to clarify and just add. Vote to the, to the litany of, of the language there.
Okay, so which, which section is it?
Six.
Okay, so not vote on any item brought up.
Right, it'll be on a future agenda or whatever, right?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, um, so do we want, is it to, um, move to the roll call vote for first reading? Uh, Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um, Alice, Judy, Amy. Um, I know that this is a, a lot of work and it is very, very much appreciated. And thank you all for putting up with press, practicing our alphabetical, um, litany of towns. Maybe we'll get it down.
No, no, I won't. It was my, I will not.
Um, okay, secretaries report.
Oh, okay, so at the last meeting. There's two sections of, of minutes in your packet. The last meeting, when we reviewed the minutes of the November 17th meeting. We didn't actually, we voted to, um. What did we do? Uh, oh shoot, I forgot.
We approved the meetings without the amendment.
Yeah, right, the amendment, not the minutes.
We didn't do the final vote. So we need to do the final vote to approve. That's all.
I will move that we vote the final amended minutes from the. Like, what's the date? Sorry.
November 17.
November 17th minute meeting.
Fourth giving.
Have a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, any comments? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
We will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, thank you very much. The second one is the December 8th minutes. So, um. I just want to remark one more time how absurd it is to be doing the, um, weighted voting. It is a nightmare. Because, you know, if you use a boilerplate. And you stamp the boilerplate in there that says 50%, 100%, whatever, you have to go in and you have to review it to make sure that that's exactly right. Was everybody in the room for every single vote? And I know people cared about it, but it is a nightmare. Um, so. Anyway, I didn't get any comments on these minutes. I don't know if anybody has any.
I do.
No.
My comment, my comment is that these minutes actually were quite complicated and they're extraordinarily well written considering how complicated they are. Uh, that's what I noticed when I was reading through them, that there was some very complicated patches that were extremely well. Uh, well, uh, written and that really caught my attention. Uh, so that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, Julia does a great job. I go, I think there are something like 18 people who watch the videos of those meetings. Julia watches them. I watch them. Believe it or not, I had to go through this two times. Okay, so, all right, so. December 8th, we need a motion to approve the minutes of December 8th.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
I know I come next only because I write down Lexington on the sheet of paper. That's the only reason I know Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
And Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. And these votes where we say our name and who we are and everything are valuable to blind people if they were. To, uh, see the video of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and, um, you know, and I do want to thank Julia and Alice. I know these are a lot of work and time consuming, so really appreciate it. Um, let me ask, was there a separate Zoom link that was sent out? No.
For executives, what, for executive session? Yes.
Yes, there was.
Yes, there is.
But I know we're gonna find it.
Okay, um, I did not get that. Um, Julia or Ed, could you, I, I know, I, I don't know what the problem is. Um, could you try sending it to me again?
Okay, but we need to, we need to adjourn, not.
I know, I know, I just wanted to. I wanted to make sure I could get on the next meeting.
Okay.
We might have asked it. Oh, no, I got, I found it, so.
I have it.
Okay, um, could we have a? A motion, um, to enter executive, um, session, um, for the reasons printed on the agenda, um, to open to executive session, return to open session. But are we returning to open session?
Yes, we are.
Return to open session for the following reason. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. With non-union personnel, namely the superintendent director, Dr. Edward Will.
I have a, uh, actually, a, a procedural comment. The, um, uh, the item nine does not say that we're going to move in back to open session and, and take any.
Oh, it doesn't?
It does not. So I don't think that we can take any action in open session until our next meeting. It does not say so in the agenda.
That's correct.
Hold on.
Agree.
You're right. Okay, so I am perfectly willing to have this executive session. We can make the motions or you make the plans that we want and then not even have an executive session the next meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I think that's what we should go ahead and do.
I'm sorry about this. I, I, I thought it would be to return, but. We can put it on the first thing on the, on the regular minutes before the budget or app, well. After the budget hearing.
We can have it at any time. We don't need to, I don't think we need to go into executive session after what we said last.
No, we don't. No, it just has to be, but I think the budget hearing is scheduled for a specific time, so I think we need to do it. After the budget.
Right after the budget.
That's right. At the school committee meeting that follows the budget hearing.
Yes, exactly.
Can I ask one question of the chair?
Yes.
Are you sure we're not gonna need an executive session next time?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure we're not going to, but probably not for this reason. In fact, we may need one for another, for other reasons.
Agreed.
So I'm not at this, um, so I think that the point was for. Yeah, okay, so could I have the motion to enter executive session and not return?
So.
Seconded. Uh, actually, I think we should read it again.
Okay.
Uh, and I will do so just to, you know, I'll talk fast. I, I, I moved to enter executive session and not to return to open session for the following. Uh, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Namely, the superintendent director, Dr. Ed Wood Boquillan, and who do we want to remain with us?
Nobody needs to be here with us. I think we're done.
Um, well, actually, it's, um. Uh, it is, uh, Julia's, um. Zoom link.
Oh, well, no, oh, well. Okay, so Julia.
So I think we need to at least have Julia to join the meeting to open this link.
Okay.
You can transfer ownership to you.
Yes, after, after we open it.
With, uh, Julia.
That's fine.
Start out with it anyway. Okay, so that's the motion.
Second.
Okay, um, second, so any, any discussion on that? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.